Good evening. Welcome to the March 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Chapala Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session since roughly 6:02. I apologize for the delay starting tonight. We've actually been pretty punctual this year, but I do apologize for the late start. So can I have a motion, please, to resume the public meeting? All in favor? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, welcome back. I hope that everyone had a wonderful winter break. It's now March, which marks the beginning of wow, where has the school year gone season? As well as the beginning of our intensive budget season. We had the budget preview a few weeks ago, and in a few minutes, Dr. Ackerman is going to present her budget proposal. Over the next few weeks, we will have more in-depth presentations, as well as opportunities for community involvement, which she's going to outline in her presentation. Ultimately, we as a board adopt the budget to present on the ballot in May, but you, the community, vote on it. So we encourage everyone to watch the presentations, to come to the community forums, and to ask any questions you may have. Few other quick updates. Right before the break, I had the opportunity to have a, to be on a Zoom with Chris Burdick, our Assembly Representative, with other school board members around the region, which was organized by Wes Putt. We raised questions and concerns, some of which are now moot, but others which centered around finances and budgeting, particularly increased funding for student mental health resources and programming, environmental initiatives, and also some flexibility relating to the budgeting process, given the constraints of the tax cap, which will be discussed in more detail later this evening. The week before that, a few of us participated in a curriculum webinar through the New York State School Boards Association, addressing the role of the BOE in curriculum adoption. It was very interesting and gave us a lot to work with on how to best communicate the ways in which our curriculum aligns with and stems from our core missions and strategic questions as a district. So that's information we're going to work with going forward, and we're really lucky to have such great resources like Wes Putt and Nisba here to support our work as school boards. So I am going to actually keep it brief tonight. We started late. We're going to jump into the budget presentation and welcome back. It's nice to see everyone's smiling faces.
Thank you. Thank you, Hillary. So I'm just going to talk very briefly about the agenda and do the community update, and then we'll move into the budget presentation. Okay, so I, I want to start, I guess you're going to move it down there, since the clicker's not working. Okay, so I just want to start by sharing with you the vaccination update. So you'll see we're all in the 80% or higher zone for all of our buildings. Some of our elementary schools are approaching 90%, Severn Bridges hit 90%. So we're still in a position where more parents are uploading information into Oprahu every day. So it's, it's really a privilege to be working in a district where so many parents have taken the necessary steps to keep our community safe. So I just, I'm always happy to be able to share this with the Board of Education. As you can see, our high school number has been stable, so that's probably where it's going to be at this point, but the other buildings continue to move. So that's great. I want to share with you our positive, our positive cases from over break. You can, but you can tell by this chart, there's been a substantial reduction in the number of students who have tested positive. We've had nine total that have tested positive on home tests, and we've had nine total that have tested positive on lab tests. But that's from Saturday, the 19th, to today. So that covers the whole spring break week up until today. So I just wanted to share that with you. So I do want to talk about our adjusted procedures very briefly. So masks are now voluntary. We had many students and staff with masks on today, and we had many students and staff without masks on today. So it was really dependent on where you were and what class you were in and which building you were in. But I wouldn't be able to sit here and say definitively either way that most of our kids didn't have their masks on or not. But I suspect that as the days go on here, that may change, and I may share something very different with you at our next meeting. But I will share with you, it felt very different at school today. A lot of happy faces, a lot of optimism. It felt, it felt refreshing, and people expressed a sense of normalcy that we haven't felt in a long time. And I know that we were all in buildings today, and I think we echo that, that that was felt throughout the district. So it was a good day for us today. Whether kids had masks on or not, there was a vibe that hasn't been there in a long time, and it was really very welcomed. So I've shared this out with families. We've had no problems, no families concerned, no one upset with our procedures. Where, you know, I just wanted to make it really clear that mask or not, we're not going to change our procedures in our classrooms, because that's not fair to kids, that's not good for the classroom dynamic, and that's not a, a position we want our teachers to be in. And I, pretty much that has been respected. So I appreciate the community being able to support that. We felt that was the best pathway forward for us. And we've also haven't received feedback that people were anticipating that we would be enforcing their mask preferences with their children. So we appreciate that support and understanding as well, because that would also add a dynamic to our classrooms that we, that would be positive for our kids. But of course, we will make sure that our students and staff were returning after having COVID. If they're here on day six through 10, that they are masked, both on our buses and in our classrooms. So we will be working on that with our families. Okay, so then, because of the new guidance that came out last night, we added another exposure notification layer to this, where we now will send out notifications to families if there was a potential exposure in a classroom. Now, none of this is required. It's all should do this or may do this, but we feel like at this point, this is a direction that we're going to go in as a district, but we could adjust this in the future. But I think based on the newness of taking our masks off right now, this is an important step to, to be sure that we're being as proactive as possible in monitoring our cases, because what our families may do if they receive a letter like this is they may voluntarily use our tests to monitor their kids. Okay, and we have so many tests that if a parent wants a test, and I'm going to send something out tomorrow about this. They just need to go to the school, and we will give them one. It doesn't matter how many we've been giving you in the past. We will give you what you need to do the testing you feel is necessary to monitor your kids based on our new protocol. So if parents need a test, any, any security vest will be able to help you that you have a child in the building, so you don't have to go to multiple places. We got another shipment in today, so we are, we are well stacked, staffed, staffed to be able to support the type of tests that our families feel that they need moving forward. I do want to talk about a couple procedural adjustments I'm going to recommend that I didn't want to do today, because I wanted to mention them tonight. I am going to recommend we no longer take temperatures as kids come into the building. The, the thermometer machines that we have, they, they're thermal machines, but a part of that component is making sure that people are wearing masks when they come in. So it's like, you don't have a mask on, you're getting yelled to put one on. And so, not that that, not that that would, we, we could, we could buy a different product to do that work. But I think at this point, because we have so many students who are vaccinated, and because we have so few cases, we're going to forego that screening in the morning for our kids, and then it'll help them get on our buses quicker. And because we now have these exposure notifications that are very different than we've had in the past, I think we're safe at this point to, to not move forward with screening kids' temperatures and the adults as they come in and out of the building. And then, because there's no exposure requirement for our guests, we're going to stop having them fill out the screener forms, because we were collecting that information in case we needed to contact our guests for contact tracing. But there's no language in there that even suggests that we engage in that practice moving forward, based on what came out yesterday. So I am going to recommend that we no longer engage in that process. Does anyone have any concerns about that? Okay, great. So I'll, we'll probably move forward in the morning tomorrow as usual, but then I'll push this out in the afternoon, so people will know moving forward what we'll be doing. But we will still have our unvaccinated students and staff complete Oprahu in the morning, so parents are still doing those screenings at home. I think that's important. Okay, so on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution to continue to require our student athletes and our coaches who are unvaccinated to be tested. The process is really easy. We give them home tests. They report the results every Monday morning. I am going to recommend we continue that process, especially if we have another variant that creates an issue for us as a district. It adds a layer of testing. I think that's important, because kids are interacting with each other very closely in these environments and our coaches. So I am going to be recommending that to you tonight. And then Adam and I are going to, Adam's going to talk about one of the grants that's on the agenda, so.
I just wanted to note on your agenda, 5.22, the Greeley Sports Boosters Club has donated or gifted $2,897 timers. So these are for the 40-yard dash and 60-yard dash to give you a time down to a hun, you know, hundredths of a second. So our students can practice with their speed drills, and some colleges require that we produce these times for students that might be interested in playing in college. It'll give students the opportunity to, to practice their 40-yard dash and 60-yard dash. So thanks to the Greeley Sports Boosters for that gift.
Okay, so I do want to also mention that in the personnel part of the agenda that I am recommending to the board that we extend Jamie's interim appointment as the Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services for another year. We've been very impressed with Jamie's leadership of, of our department. I think because we're entering into this strategic planning process, it would behoove us to have stable leadership in that position. And Jamie's been doing an excellent job. I've had astounding feedback from her colleagues and from her parents, and we're so grateful she's agreed to serve in this role again. So I do want to recommend that, acknowledge that tonight publicly, that I'm grateful that Jamie has agreed to serve in this role. And so I'm asking that you consider approving that tonight, which means she'll take another leave of absence from her Director of Literacy position to be able to continue in this position. And I think it'll provide stability for our families that they need.
Thank you for being willing to, to do this for another year.
Okay, so that's the end of the superintendent's update. So now I would like to transition into the budget presentation that Andrew and I will do together. Okay, so tonight is the night where we give you the overview of the proposed budget. And as Hillary had mentioned in her report, that there are meetings in the future where we go over each component in detail, and then the final budget proposal is presented to the Board of Education for adoption in April. Along the way, there's opportunities for parents to give feedback that we would take into consideration before that April meeting where we present a budget for your consideration for adoption. So just right at the beginning, we, we'd like to share what our financial ask will be of the community. So we are within our levy limit, and we're asking for an increase of 2.69% or about $3.5 million in our budget, bringing our total budget up to about $134 million moving into next year. So our budget development calendar is the same every year. We're in the, we're in the part where we are working through our, our work sessions. It starts back in the fall, and it concludes with our vote in May, hopefully. And if, if, if necessary, we can have another vote in June. But the budget calendar is pretty stable, where it involves input from our stakeholders. And then we get to the place where we're presenting to you through that process, where we anticipate our needs would be moving forward into the next school year. And of course, our strategic questions, the board's strategic questions guide, our process, making sure that we're fiscally responsible, ensuring that our program encourages our students to think deeply and creatively and work collaboratively and solve problems as they acquire content knowledge, and then, of course, that we're addressing social emotional learning in our planning. And then, and then we have our profile of our graduate, which drives the way that we're, we're constructing our program. But we also wanted to make sure that this budget kept students at the center of every decision that we made, expands and preserves our programs, both social, emotional, and academic, makes adjustments necessary based on where we are with COVID currently, revises our class sizes, because we did make some adjustments last year due to social distancing that we needed to reconsider this year, prioritizes our infrastructure needs, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we move through this presentation. We know that we have residents here that are concerned about their taxes, so we're thinking about that as well, which is why we are recommending a budget within the levy limit. And then it's aligned to the areas that we've identified in our strategic plan, which we know that there's six of them, and this drives our instructional work. And we, we've revisited that multiple times here throughout the community, and just so people understand what we're prioritizing as we move forward. So then we have our operating standards, which, which again is a reiteration of things that we know that are important to us and important to our community about extending, expanding our, our programs to align with our initiatives, making sure enrollment levels are appropriate and supporting digitalized instruction, our classes based on our sizes, making sure that our program reflects the 21st century, making sure, ensuring the integrity of our physical plant, that we have our extracurricular and programs in place, and our athletics, that we meet our contractual obligations, that we have a robust professional learning opportunities presented for our staff, that we're making sure that we are responding to needs identified by our administrative team and our faculty and our staff, that we are addressing needs identified in our audits, which is really important for us as we plan forward, that we're making sure that we're addressing infrastructure needs that need remediation, because some of our buildings are older than others, of course, and that we have the technology that we need in our classrooms, so that they're cutting edge. So I'd like, Andrew, if you could just talk about our recent budget history. So go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Ackman. So this is a slide that I.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me all right? All right. So this chart was an updated chart from the last board meeting about the budget. I've added now the projected budget for next year. This slide represents over the period 2016-17 school year to next year, an average budget increase of about 1.85% and a levy increase of about 1.44%. On the next slide, it's also an update from our previous meeting. But I will highlight that the enrollment projections here have changed, and Dr. Ackman will talk more detail about that. And you'll notice the health insurance premium increase. So the consortium that we are part of has experienced quite a few difficult months in terms of financial performance in the, in the later part of the calendar year 2021. So we have received an update. A 6% premium increase before will now be an 8% premium increase, which is a substantial change, and it does impact the budget, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. The next slide, again, is repeat from the last time, so I'll move past that one. And we still have some unknown impacts. We've got contractual negotiations going on with our teachers' union. State aid is not final until the state budget is finalized. And CPI impacts our transportation costs, so we'll, we'll see where that will land later in the school year. I know that Jamie Edelman and Karen's team are still working through the CSC process, so we don't know where the special education cost will land just yet, but we hope that this budget covers us in that regard. And then I recently received estimated assessed values, so those won't be finalized, and they impact the tax rate, which is not necessarily part of our budget, but something we do have to consider. Inflation is a problem. I'll talk more about that in a second. And obviously, we are moving past the COVID pandemic stages that we are familiar with, and hopefully, there'll be no negative impacts for that. But we will see as time goes on.
Right, so I do want to talk about a few differences in this year's budget than maybe we've experienced in the past. So I want to share that, as many of you know, we had an influx of families move into the district when, for a whole variety of reasons. But because we had been able to be open during the initial start of the pandemic, I, I feel like we were in a place where many families chose to come to our district over the summer last year, which was unique, maybe with past experiences that we have had the opportunity to learn from. So I do want to share with you some of the drivers of this budget that we had to take in consideration this year that were different, is that we had, we had, you know, 33 special education students transfer into the district. The previous year, that was 12. We had 26 ELL students transfer into the district. The previous year, that was 15. So those are significant numbers and, and, which is, which is okay, but there are services and costs associated when transfers like that happen at such high numbers compared to maybe the past. I also wanted to share with you is that we have 65 students in district right now that need teaching assistant support. That's not such an anomaly compared to the year before, but I do want to mention that at this point, because that's going to be a significant item of discussion as we plan forward in our strategic planning process for special education, because we really need to look at that and to determine if there needs to be some shifts in our program offerings to perhaps reduce that number based on what kids need, or maybe not. But I do want to mention that to you, because that to us is something that's significant, that we need to be talking about. I also want to share with you that over the summer, we added four elementary positions, because we knew we needed to reduce class size because of spaces that needed to, because of our spaces and because of social distancing. So we needed to be thinking about that going into this year and make some adjustments to our classes for next year with the anticipation that that need will no longer be necessary. And I also just want to come back to that 8% increase in health insurance, because that's a, that's a million-dollar increase on the budget. And when you're dealing with the levy, you only have so much money that you can increase in your budget because of those limitations, and that's a substantial number that's associated with that levy increase. And I also want to share, because I think it's important, that there are certain building issues that need to be addressed that we, we can't build into this budget because of the levy limit. So as we talk in the future about how to address things such as the roof, and are we going to revisit the front entrance of Greeley, because we did a lot of work before the pandemic on whether or not we're going to close off that space based on some recommendations from a security task force. You know, and you, and you know that we've been having some problems with the underground of Greeley. I mean, that's just the best way to say it. There's steam coming up. We've had some sewer issues. We've had some conversations about whether or not we need to build some outside classrooms at, at, at our elementary schools and to have students learning outside in a different way, mainly because of the pandemic. And then we're having some wiring issues here at Greeley. So at, at some point over the summer, we're going to have to talk about, does it make sense for us to consider a facilities bond to be able to support some of these projects, given our limitations with the levy and that we can't embed this work within our current budget, because we want to make sure that we're providing something under the, the limit for our taxpayers. So I just want to mention that we probably need to begin to have conversations after this budget process concludes about these items, starting in the, in the summer. I just don't want people to think, think that we forgot about them, because we know that they're really important. So now I'm going to, because I've been talking about the tax cap, I just want Andrew to talk about how that's created just for our families that aren't familiar with our budgeting process. So go ahead, Andrew.
Sure. So in, in June of 2011, the state passed a property tax cap bill, which I think many of us have become accustomed to, but it's important for us to revisit and just make sure everyone's aware of what the implications of that are. So, so that bill went into effect for the 12, 2012, 2013 school year. And what it did is it put a limit on what the school district could raise in terms of taxes with a simple majority vote. So 50% plus one voter. The, the tax cap is tied to CPI, and it's capped at 2%, the piece of that calculation. So it has been deemed the 2% tax cap, but it's much more complicated than that. There are some important aspects to understand. So I talked about CPI. There are exclusions from the cap that allow you to go up or down from that, that 2% number. Most important to our community are items related to the property tax base growth factor, which is talking about the development in your community in the school district. So what, what is the property value from new construction growing, whether it be new homes or just modifications to your own home? Like, that all goes into that. And then allowable exclusions. So we have for tort cases where the district has to pay a legal settlement. It's very rare, but that's an exception or exclusion, rather. Debt service and capital improvement projects on your facilities, right? The state is not penalizing you for needing to do work on your buildings, which we do here on a regular basis, and we will continue to do. And then if there's increases in ERS or TRS above a certain threshold, those contributions that the district has to incur could also be an exclusion. But they don't typically apply based on, on whether rate has been in recent years. If, for some reason, the district needs to go above the property tax cap, it's permitted to do that, but it will take a 60% voter approval, which is unusual, because in most of our municipal governments in New York State that fall under the tax cap, it takes 60% of the governing body, which would be the Board of Education in our case. But because school budgets are placed in front of the voters, the voters have to approve those, those overrides in our budget every year.
So I'm sorry, can I ask you a really quick question? So in terms of exclusions, TRS or ERS would have potentially been exclusions, but the, the healthcare does not.
It does not, does not.
Okay. So then, Andrew, can you talk about inflation trends?
Yeah, so obviously inflation is a concern for us all. I think we've heard about it. If you open a newspaper or listen to a news podcast or anything recently, you can see over the last three years here, right, inflation had been quite stable, 1%, 1.6% in 2018, 1.5 in 2019, 2.3 January of 2020. However, from January of 21 to today, we've seen a significant increase, and it is likely that we will continue to see that. And that has two implications. The first being our property tax cap, as I just talked about, the, the piece of that calculation that takes inflation into account is capped at only 2%, right? The other side of that is our expenses. So whether they be healthcare, whether they be transportation, whether they be supplies for custodians or our classrooms, right? All those costs are going to be rising based on inflation, so we just need to be mindful of that as we budget going forward.
Okay, so now Andrew's going to go through our expenditures or revenues, and then he'll do our, our tax cap calculation. Okay, so ready?
Ready to go. So, so as Dr. Ackman mentioned, our budget increase this year is about $3.5 million or 2.7%, rounding up 2.69, if we go out an extra decimal point. In this budget, you'll see salaries are going up by about $200,000. And Dr. Ackman will talk a little bit more about that in a second. So it's a, the size of the budget in salaries, it's a relatively flat increase at 0.3%. But benefits are going up substantially at $908,000. And that is less than the 1.1 million we talked about for health insurance, because this year ERS is actually going down. So the employee's retirement system is a pension system managed by the State Comptroller's Office. They've had some very good investment gains that, that have brought down the employer contribution rate significantly this coming school year. The TRS rate is going up, however, so that also offsets those savings. Debt service is for our bonds that we've previously issued for, for different construction projects across the district, as well as the energy performance contract. We know that number, it is fairly stable over the two, two years of the budget. Transportation costs, we've made an assumption on what we're going to end up having to pay. This is, you know, an area of concern for me as we try to figure out how our transportation contract is going to play out next year. It is tied to CPI and a negotiation with, with our vendor. In operations and maintenance, this is largely related to the cost of doing projects and the supplies involved. So, so there's a nominal increase of about 2% in operations and maintenance. And that's not related to salaries. The salaries for, for that group are included above. Special education is an area where Dr. Ackman talked about students who moved into this family. We cannot choose to, to not educate or not follow an IEP, right? So we have some mandated costs that we have to account for in this budget. In here, you'll see an increase when we drill down into the budget of our BOSI's tuitions. Some of our students that are going out of district are going to BOSI's this year, so there's a large increase in that line. We will see some savings in the tuition line for other placements, whether they be private or public, but that, that's a key driver there. In our BOSI services, related to the conversation about special education, historically in this district, I found in doing my research and getting comfortable with the numbers here, we've, we've typically, across the district, budgeted well for BOSI's. However, we've done a lot of transfers, and oftentimes the transfers come from the special education tuition line, because that's where we want to make sure we have the money. And then we, it allows us to transfer out of there to, to do different things, to improve our districts. We talked about the security consultant that we use in previous meetings. You know, those are the types of things that now I need to account for, because I'm concerned that with the BOSI's tuition line being used and being needed, we've moved some, some BOSI's codes up in areas like the business office and curriculum and HR, in facilities to, to capture costs that we have been incurring. It's just we've been doing it through budget transfers in the past. In technology, a key increase in this line is related to devices. So the generosity of the Education Foundation, several years ago, we received a grant of iPads. So those iPads. So those iPads are coming due for refresh. There's some other student devices that need to be replaced as well as network devices. So so though the the increases in technology are largely around student centered needs and help our program. So we'll talk more about those in coming weeks. But that's what's driving that increase there and it is necessary to our curriculum. And then finally, in the other line, the the largest piece of this increase here is the transfer to capital line. And the next slide will talk a little bit about what we're trying to do there. But we're going to go from from about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our transfer to capital line this year for the West Orchard roof. We're asking for six hundred thousand next year. Because we found that we need more money to to address that roof in its entirety. And it is the worst roof in the district and we'd like to secure that building envelope. So this slide just shows year to year how the different components that I just reviewed. Make up the pie, right? So so salary and benefits are are far and away the largest part of our budget, if we all know that. And they, as a percentage of the whole, it's about seventy two percent of our budget. So so relatively speaking, you might see some modest swings in the other budget categories. But we are still largely driven by our salaries and benefits year to year. So I just talked about this briefly, but you know, Dr. Ackman talked about the large list of needs that we have in the district. And if we continue to push things down the road, it only makes it harder to get caught up. So Mr. Gromando and I felt strongly that it's important for us to to fund. As much as we can of this roof through the capital budget this year. It will save us from the many repairs that we are continuing to 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 put into this building. And repairs are not just roofs, right? They are ceiling tiles. They may be things that that the water drips on when that happens. So it is a really important one. It's also a quality of classroom or quality of life, right? Issue at the building to keep having to replace the same thing over again. So it it may not find every surface in the roof. Certainly, the gym roof is fine, that was recently replaced. But there might be other sections where through modest repairs through the O and M budget, we'll be able to take care of those. But this is an important step in our facilities improvements. So how are we funding the budget? So the the revenue chart must equal the the expense chart. And as you see here, the largest increase in our year to year financial picture is the property tax levy. We are going up to three point one seven million on the on the property tax levy. We also do have an increase in state aid, which is not as great as many of our other districts in this state. But we are receiving at three hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. The largest piece of that is tied to foundation aid. So we are a district that is held harmless, so we get a an increase to that number every year. The other components are all expense based driven aids. And as you can imagine, certain aids like transportation and. The like, the expenses this year are higher perhaps than they were last year and and we're getting the aid next year for that. Appropriate fund balance, we felt it was important that this is not the year to to reduce that level of support in the budget. Though we have had some pressure on it this year, as you know, to do some of the facilities improvements that we needed to do. The emergency repairs in this very auditorium, as well as outside with our sewer and water mains. We tried to keep that level flat this year and we believe we'll be able to do that and still have a healthy balance sheet for the district. Sales tax, the the sales receipts have been very good for us. We're trending up, so we're taking account for that in this budget. In the use of money and property, I want to highlight that this may seem innocuous, but this is actually an important up and down. So we have assumed a much lower interest rate on return because that's what we're receiving right now. We've taken that down. We've also had some kind of lower receipts of continuing education, but that's coming down in that line. However, as part of the iPad refresh that I talked about in technology earlier. We're accounting for about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar dollars of basically buyback money that we will get. When we sell back the existing devices that are nearing end of life, that is accounted in here, however. So while if you look strictly from a technology perspective, that's great. It helps offset the increase that we've got. It's actually on a revenue line going to help us fund a shortfall that we'll have in this category. All told, the the increase on the budget is three point five million or two point six nine percent. And the next chart just does again show the year to year comparison of how these revenue categories make up the budget that we're asking for. And property tax levy is still in the eighty seven point four percent range. Now, if I haven't forged you to death yet, the property tax cap will do it. So the next slide here, sorry, just one back.
Yep.
So so what I wanted to talk about is the simplified calculation first, right? So I talked about CPI being well over one, two percent, but we are capped at two percent. So that's the first piece of this. We get to to apply that factor to our current year's tax levy. Our tax base growth factor, the development in our community, it does lag a few years. So what you see happening now will not be helping us until future years. That that number is. Point two four percent is quite low, but it does help us as we look at the levy calculation. And then our capital exclusions, which I mentioned earlier, included our debt service, includes our contribution to BOSI's capital. And it's offset by building aid and that's six point five million dollars this year. Also included in this is the work we'll be doing on the West Orchard roof. And the work that we previous years had funded to do the Bell cafeteria. So we're taking account to all the capital portion money we've had. That is how the calculation works and we will will include that in our capital exclusion. So it results in a levy limit or the the dollar amount by which if we stay below, we have a simple majority vote and we will pass the budget. The more complicated calculation is this one. And it starts with our current year tax levy of a hundred and thirteen million and nine thirty four. You apply the tax base growth factor. You have to subtract last year's exclusions, right? And then you get to apply that two percent that everyone talked about in the news. From there, we add back the exclusions that are acceptable for the next coming school year. Which really are just the capital exclusion that I talked about earlier. And you come up with a levy limit of a hundred and seventeen million, one oh seven or two point seven nine percent on the levy cap.
Can I just, are there any questions about that from the board before we move on? Okay, good, thank you. All right, so I now want to just talk about enrollment projections and sections going into next year. And I always say this at the beginning of this part of the presentation. This is an evolving situation and I just, it's important for families to know that if the enrollment justifies. An increase in sections over the summer, we do add sections. But at the outset, we section based on our contractual obligations and limits that have been. Set through negotiation with the CS C C T and approved by the Board of Education. So this is our projection slide, enrollment projections through twenty twenty five, twenty six. So if when we post this on the on the website, people can go through and they can look at these numbers. A lot of factors go into our enrollment projections. We had extensive study done previously because of the form based code. But but you also have to understand that they evolve over time and and they're as accurate as they can be based on a number of factors that go into these calculations. So I do want to just share with you and remind the board that our our thresholds for our classes for kindergarten is twenty students. For first grade, it's twenty three. For second through fourth grade, it's twenty five. And for our middle and high school level students, it's twenty eight. So if you look at our sections moving into the elementary schools, you can see with the exception of our two kindergartens at Rafflin at Waringbrook. In Waringbrook, which are based on projections, our class sizes are under those thresholds right now for every grade level. And I would like to acknowledge there's some grade levels that are closer to the threshold than others are. But there's many of them that are at the upper end of the threshold. And we are at a at a at a space where we are at our levy limit. So making adjustments to class sizes because they're close to the threshold but haven't exceeded them. Is not something that the district would be able to do without asking for the levy to. Let for us to go over the levy limit and have voters consider approving the tax levy through a super majority. Which is not something that I would be recommending to you. Now, in the past, there's been one or maybe two sections that were closer to the limit. So we would be able to review that with with different consideration. But in those situations, we haven't been at the limit, which is where we are right now. So I just want to make that very clear with the understanding that if we were to exceed. Over the summer, due to an increase in enrollment like we did previously, we would add sections. But at this point, I'm not recommending that we add any sections through this budget process. Irregardless of the feedback that we that we may receive along the way. And I know that parents can be very. Concerned about what our levy, what our class sizes look like. And I I certainly appreciate that. But when you look at the 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 spread of the classes across the grade levels, you can see that it's pretty even throughout all three buildings.
So can I just say?
Sure.
So. Those two kindergarten sections and they're twenty point two or twenty point three. Is that considered to be within the contractual twenty?
Right, so we're going to, because that's a projection and not an accurate number. I wouldn't add a section, reducing that significantly at this point. We would have to look at that when we actually actually have enrollment happening to determine if another section would be added. Now, if if two classes are at twenty and one class is at twenty one, that class may get additional support through. They may through another adult in the room rather than adding a section. But those are decisions that we make at the time, which we've had to make in the past. But it certainly wouldn't, having a class based on a projection of twenty point three wouldn't trigger us adding another section at this point. Because it's not a real number, it's projected number.
Right, and the students could move out as well as move in.
Right, we may we may only have seventy five kids enroll in kindergarten. We may have ninety, then we would have another section, okay? So we do the best we can at this moment, which is why I keep, I need to keep resharing because I think it's important. We make adjustments in the summer as we need to. There may be sections that we reduce because we don't have as many students in kindergarten as we anticipated, which has happened before too. So these are our middle school sections are all under the clearly under the twenty eight. Average class size threshold. And then, of course, our high school sections, and this varies all over the place. We do the best that we can, but the enrollment in classes is different based on what kids need. But we do a pretty good job at making sure our classes are at reasonable sizes in the high school. Right, so at this point, we just would like to provide just a budget summary. So our proposed budget going into next year is about one hundred and thirty four million or a two point approximately seven percent increase. And just in terms of our our budget, we feel like it responds for strategic questions. And our our target areas in our coherence plan, it meets our operating standards. It supports our students both academically and emotionally. It maintains our funding for equity work that adheres to our class size ratios that I just presented to you a few moments ago. It it supports our professional learning, which is one of, I think, our our areas that sets us apart from other school communities. It adjusts our personnel based on our actual enrollment and it's below the levy limit. So we don't need to move forward with a super majority, which I know is very important to a lot of members of our community. So at this point, we'd like to take any questions from the board, which will inform our future presentations, which are much more detailed. From our component, our, as we do our component budget. So are there any questions regarding what we presented or things that you want to make sure that we highlight as we plan forward and get ready for our next budget presentations? Yes, Jamie?
I don't know if I turned my mic on yet. And I'm sure I know as we have specific departments come in and I know special ed will come in and talk about their budget. But when you see those numbers on the increases in terms of students needing needing services, which we will always provide, obviously. How does that affect our staffing? And will it affect our staffing when it reaches a certain level? So I don't know if that's going to be discussed and and, you know, because we want to make sure that obviously that there's enough people to dispense those services, so.
Right, so we'll talk about our our staffing allocated to support the special education program when Jamie presents the.
Right.
Her component part of her budget presentation. And I also think it's important to highlight that staffing in special education for the following school year may change. Based on some of the strategic areas identified for improvement based on the audit that we just had completed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Warren, were you gonna? Go ahead.
I have a couple of things, I have a couple of things. One, before I have more.
We can't hear you.
So before I have more questions, I want to see the detailed presentations because I think that'll maybe answer some of my questions that I've seen from this already. You mentioned kindergarten, I mean, it's always been unpredictable. So I think we've always done a pretty good job at trying to predict that, but best we can do with it. Class size, I know every year. We almost have an issue with one class size and we always seem to work it out. So I have no doubt that we'll be able to work it out again this year. And then the last thing is, this is for Andrew. Can you go back to the the insurance consortium? We went up, it looks like twenty five percent, right? From six to eight?
From six to eight, well, so the the premium increase was six percent and then it became eight percent because of the the poor performance that the plan was having.
Okay. So based on your knowledge, because I know you've done this before. Is the consortium the best place for us to be right now? Because I know I know there are three ways we can insure. We can self insure, which is very risky.
Correct.
So one of our neighboring districts did that and got themselves in trouble because they thought they would be able to save money. And they had a couple issues over about a year and they just, and we can insure with the state, correct?
We can, we could join either night shift, yeah, the state plan or or another private provider, yep.
And then we have the consortium.
Correct.
So can you explain why the consortium is the best for us?
So I I can't tell you that it's the best or it's not the best. What I will tell you is we we have a voice at the table. So so as opposed to going to the marketplace and trying to to find the cheapest plan that has significant plan changes. Basically, it's a take it or leave it type conversation. The plan that we are part of is geared to the members it supports, right? So you can look at that in two ways. It supports districts in trying to be cost effective in managing health insurance for the for the district. Or it could offer some really important benefits for the for the covered members. I think that that's a debate that we're having as a governing group. Dr. Ackman and I both sit on the on the consortium, you know, I'm part of the finance committee. We are a very good health insurance plan, when I say we, meaning the consortium. And we are still cost effective when you look at that plan makeup versus what's out there. There is a time, however, where the plan, and it's happening right now, needs to look. At what is the ultimate objective? And is it to offer the best of the best? Or is it off to offer a cost effective health plan? Because because it, those decisions are at odds of one another when you look at what's covered. What what type of copays you have, what type of, you know, procedures are funded.
But then again, as you said, since we're at the table, we can make those decisions. We're not held somebody else's decision.
We are part of the overall governing body, right? So and and it is just to give some context. On the on the the district administration side, superintendents and business officials from the member districts are are part of that group. And then from the overall governance perspective, that the superintendents and business officials, as well as a labor management group. That is made up of members from from part of districts. Sit on that plan and ultimately run an insurance company. And we have a person at Southern, excuse me, Putnam Northwest BOSI's, who who is an insurance expert. You know, he worked in Google and PepsiCo and he he knows what insurance is about. He manages the plan on behalf of all the member districts. And then we also have consultants like Aetna and and other groups that that manage the actual kind of day to day routines of it. And and some consultants as well. So I my my perspective on it, having been through this a couple of times, you know, we were self insured in one district I was part of. We had to get out of there, we went to night shift. My previous district was part of a similar consortium. And and it's a struggle of ultimately what what's driving the decisions of the consortium. It's, is it cost savings for the districts or is it planned benefits for the members? And that's always at odds.
I think that's what we're always looking for, cost savings and benefits. But it seems to me like the consortium is, what I'm hearing from you is that the consortium gives us the best. We, we get the, we have a seat at the table. We can, we have, we have more, we, we get to determine our own, our own destiny, if you want to call it that.
I would say yes, right? And, and as a purchaser then of that plan, I, I think what we need, need to be mindful of is making sure that we have a strong voice at the table because the trajectory of all health insurance is not going down, right? So at what point does the premium plan we have no longer become a cost effective option for, for the members involved? But, but I think at this point, I'm, I'm comfortable that, that we are in a good place. It's well managed and, and the right discussions are happening.
Thank you, Andrew.
You go.
Can I piggyback on Warren's question, actually? So when you said that it jumped from a 6% expected increase to an 8% because they had a rough year, basically, what, what does that mean? Is that, that they ended up paying out a lot of benefits that they weren't expecting? Is it, I guess what, my concern is, as we think, you know, obviously we're planning for next year. But as we're thinking for the next five years, right? Like, is this, are we looking at an 8% increase every year going forward, do we think? Like, is this, because that's huge.
The, the conversation we've been having as a finance committee is, is this a regression to the mean? Right, so, so is the average healthcare, you know, increase 5% that we should plan? Or 6% that we should plan every year? And when you play with averages, right, this happens to be on the high end, you know? What I will tell you is this is more than just a few bad cases, right? And what, what's a bad case? You know, significant cancers, significantly premature births, right? Like, you know, complications with, with surgery. What, what, there, there could be an individual person that vastly swings the outcome. The good thing about being a part of a consortium, you've broadened the population. So I think we've had a bit of a, kind of joining of two issues in the, in the late fall of last year, which is delayed COVID procedures plus some really bad stories. And I think we've, we've got a very short window that we had to react in. And we've done that because we need to protect the plan. So that's why we made that increase from 6 to 8%. Do I think that that is going to be an ongoing thing? No, because we're, we're taking actions to prevent it going forward.
Kayla or Allison, did you have anything that you wanted us to hear before we move forward and, and plan for the next part of our budget? Okay. Yeah, Jean, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. But just, I know this is Andrew's first time presenting to all of us. And I just want to say that I, I think you've made this very easy to understand for anyone who's listening tonight. And, and a lot of us have heard this before. Everything from the tax cap to the CPI and what are the deductions? And what's the actual rate of tax increase? So thank you. And we know that the budget process is a lengthy one. It starts at the very beginning of the school year. And we know that a lot of people's heads can swirl around listening to lots of these numbers. But I think you did a really excellent job of presenting this in a, in a digestible way to the community. So I just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. We're not done yet. We have another slide. So I just wanted to go over the budget calendar. So we're on our, we've done our second meeting. So our, our next board meeting, we'll be talking about curriculum, technology, special education, athletics. And then at our March 23rd meeting, we'll talk, Joe will be here presenting. And Andrew will present again some other aspects of the budget in more detail. And what would happen if our budget wasn't approved by the voters in May? What's the next steps in that process would be? We have our BTA budget forum. I'll talk more about that in a second. And then on the sixth, we'll present the budget to you for your consideration. And then on the fourth, we'll have a hearing, which I always thought was a little backwards, but it's just the process that we have to follow in New York State, where people will be able to come up and get, it's just another opportunity to provide feedback. And then we will have also at that night, the library will present their budget here because they are community votes on the library budget and their election at the same time as ours. And then our budget vote is on May 17th. And then if you have feedback that you'd like to give us, you don't have to wait for one of our meetings. You can email all of us. And we welcome that feedback. And that does shape our process and often influences the final budget that we present to the Board of Education for consideration on the first meeting in April. And then I, I want to thank Peggy. She'll be hosting our budget forum on Zoom, where the central office will present the budget overview for the community. And then Peggy will ask the, us to respond to questions real time on that, in that Zoom meeting. So we look forward to be able, being able to sponsor that for our families. So thank you. That's our, that's the conclusion of our second budget presentation. And that's the end of the superintendent's report.
Great, well, thank you.
I have a question. If we're, if we're now like having no masks, why are we doing a budget via, the budget, PTA budget via Zoom?
Right, so we were in a position at the time where we set that meeting, that we would be having that in person and we're not going to have parents in the building during the school day. So usually that's a nine o'clock meeting in the morning. I could talk to the PTA about having that in person. But we also in a different place where people may, we may have more participation if we actually do it online. And parents could come to the, the hearing and to a meeting to give feedback. So it might be just a different way to solicit feedback from families because more may be willing to participate if they don't have to leave their house. So it's something we can talk about.
We both have it online and, I don't know. I just think, you know, in, in person seems to work very well. But someone can think about it.
Yeah, I could talk to the PTA about that.
Okay, thank you. So that, sorry, that brings us to committee reports. I have nothing to report. Yeah, I'm like, I don't know if anything's happened because of winter break. But does anybody have any committee reports?
Yeah, facility is supposed to meet next week, but we're gonna, we're gonna readjust the date on that. And I know we have some policies we have to work on, so we'll have a meeting coming up there.
We had, there was a sports boosters meeting, like sort of after this meeting, but before, before break. But I know, so I just want to thank the sports boosters. Obviously, you saw the, the timers that they contributed. They just discussed a couple of initiatives. By the way, we do have a new mascot in uniform at really, it's a fabulous quite if you want to take a look at any game, that hopefully more people will be at them soon. And they just have a lot of really nice things going in terms of bringing in speakers, doing a student athletic committee, like a leadership committee through the sports boosters, just actually the athletic department and starting a leadership committee there, which I think is a great idea. And just a lot of really great stuff. So they, they, they do have a, you know, a development fund that, that really helps fund a lot of the programming and a lot of the donations, et cetera. So I just hope people will consider that for the sports boosters. They're doing a lot of great stuff for us, so.
Great, thank you. That brings us to our public comment period. We welcome public comments. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. So there are microphones set up in both aisles. If you'd like to make a public comment, please come on down, state your name and talk to us.
Hello, good evening. My name is Diane Poufal and I have three children enrolled in the Chappaqua School Districts. I am here today not only as a parent, but as an educator too. I am dual certified in both regular and special education and have close to 20 years of teaching experiences. Tonight, I am here to specifically talk about my concern with the current math model for our eighth grade students. I have firsthand experience with this curriculum and know the expectations that are put upon our children in eighth grade. My older two boys had previously taken this class. And as a result, I am speaking from experience when I say one program does not fit all students. As of two years ago, this course was recommended for students with a specific grade point average and a teacher recommendation. Cut to now, we expect every student to take advanced math, even when they are barely passing seventh grade math. My seventh grader is one of those students. I'm not surprised. In fifth grade, the school closed for COVID. In sixth grade, he learned math in a gym, listening to the acoustics in a gym with children on the other side of a portable wall. He is now a seventh grader with one year of solid math. I've inquired about our neighboring school districts and I was not surprised to learn that no one else is doing this. Briar Cliff, Armonk, Pleasantville, Katona, Lewisboro, all offer various classes for their eighth grade students. Specifically in Eastchester, they offer four levels of math for their eighth graders. There is a 15 to 1-1 ratio math class. There is a co-taught math class. There is a regular math eight class taught by a regular education teacher and an algebra one class for honors accelerated students. If Chappaqua is going to expect all students to take an advanced math class, I strongly request that our district consider a co-taught model where a regular and special education teacher work with our most struggling students. At the very least, this will improve teacher-student ratio and offer these students a fighting chance. If we were putting a high school level course in our middle school, we should at least support our students in the same way that really does. This co-taught model will allow students to feel successful in math and build the necessary foundation for high school. Coming off a two-year pandemic marred with several educational, social, and emotional disruptions, now is the time to close the gap and properly support our children. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. I'm here for the same reason Diane's here. My name's Kendall Sandlin. I have four children, two currently in the district. At one point, I had four children in the district. I have a boy who graduated 2017, a girl who graduated 2019. I have a boy who's currently a sophomore, a girl who's currently a seventh grader. So three of my children were in the old model of math and one is currently in the new model. So four of my kids, excuse me, three of my four kids struggle a bit with math and one does not at all. So of the two who struggled a bit on the old model, they were able to take normal math in the eighth grade, the non-advanced math in the eighth grade. And, and they did fine. One of them graduated from SUNY New Paltz with honors. One of them is currently at FIT in advertising and marketing communications. They never took advanced math at Greeley. They never took AP physics or AP Chem and they were completely fine with that. Very happy. My guy who's a sophomore now is, has a 400 in Chem. He's going to take AP physics next year, but he can't wait. My daughter now is struggling in seventh grade, as Diane laid out very clearly. It's, it's been tough for them. She's really having a difficult time in seventh grade. I can't imagine what she and all the other kids who are struggling are going to do, let alone the 33 new kids, as Dr. Ackerman has said, who are, who are coming into the district, the special education students who are just moving into the district every, every year. And all the kids who get academic intervention services are feeling. It's, it's tough for them to be thrown into the deep end, especially during the pandemic. So if we're going to continue this new model where all the eighth grade students take advanced math, if we could have a co-taught classroom, at least one, I think that would be excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everybody. I am here for the same reason as Kendall and Diane. My name's Kristen McGinty. I have four children in the district. I've lived here for 15 years. I have two children in Bell, two in Grafflin. I just want to paint a little picture as a mom with children who struggle with math ranging from third grade to seventh. I have two children with anxiety, one being math-based. She is at Bell. I have a child who has a 504. I have a child with ADHD. So I'm just trying to speak to you as a parent that has a range of learning challenges as, as it is with, sorry, the children in my house. I have a seventh grade son, which is why I'm here. Next year will be a huge struggle, I believe, for him. He has really held it together this year, but it's been difficult. We are seeing a tutor. My fifth grader is also seeing a tutor. We're spending $300 a week just to get through his basic math and my fifth graders as well. It's a struggle for them. I did not even know about this eighth grade plan. And I just found out about it. And I'm just disappointed. I'm concerned about the stress for these children that, again, struggle with basic math class, the anxiety, the pressure cooker feeling in the district that some of these kids have. I appreciate the fact that this path suits some students. The problem is that the students that it doesn't suit, they're left behind. I don't know what the answer is or how we can impart this upon these kids that are already struggling. It just seems heartless, truly. I did not enroll my children in a public school that feels like a math academy suddenly. So why are other districts not doing this? Why are we? What's the significance? Why are we trying to stand out amongst everybody else? I don't think we have the information. And we are going to be paying for this at home. When those kids leave school and come home and fall apart and are stressed and crying and struggling and comparing themselves to their peers, it's so detrimental. These are still children and I just have a major issue with this path we're taking. And I feel that it needs to be justified. I'm sure many of you up there are parents yourselves. And if you put yourself in that position, imagine your children, if they struggle with math like mine do, your heart breaks. It just seems like we're setting them up for failure. I just really, I'm just speaking to you all as parents from the heart. I just have an issue with the fact that my middle schooler next year will be taking high school math and he's going to struggle. So thank you for listening.
Okay, does anybody want? Are there any more public comments? Okay, then that closes the public comment period. We thank everybody for their comments.
We just have a, just briefly, Jamie and I will go back and look at our assignments for math next year for algebra and how we're supporting special education students. And we'll report back to the board based on the feedback we heard tonight.
Yeah, no, we would appreciate hearing what supports are in place.
Thank you for bringing that forward.
So that brings us to approvals and ratifications. Can I have a motion, please, for 3.1, which is accepting the minutes of the February 9th board meeting?
I'll move 3.1.
I'll second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept 4.1 as presented. Second. Any questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, Jamie.
There's no non-instructional, so.
Oh, there isn't. Oh, there we go. All right, well, that brings us to our consent agenda. We're, we're thrilled, Jamie, that you're going to be up here with us for another year. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that we approve the following consent agenda. However, before we move that, is there anything under the fives that any board member wishes to remove?
Yeah, I'd like to take a 5.13. I'd like to actually table 5.13. Well, do we have to?
You have to remove it.
We have to remove it, then we'll deal with it. So 5.13?
I'd like to, yeah, move, remove it.
Okay, then we're going to remove 5.13 and we'll look at the rest of the consent agenda first. And then, so can I have a motion, please, to remove 5.13 from the consent agenda?
I move.
I will second that.
Get a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the consent agenda is now, as we consider it, 5.1 through 5.12 and additionally 5.14 through, oh gosh, it's big, 5.22.
I move consent agenda, the way you just said it.
I will second that. Are there any questions, concerns? I will second that, are there any questions, concerns, or things people want to discuss? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then I will move item 5.13.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I move that we table 5.13, I think we need some more, I'd like to get some more information regarding this tax search, tax cert on this particular item, so I'm not ready to vote on that, I'm not sure if the rest of the board is, but I suggest we table that until next time.
That's fine, but I need some guidance on how we do that.
I'll second.
Okay.
So I move to table 5.13. Allison, second.
Oh, you seconded. Okay, all in favor of tabling 5.13?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. So 5.13 is the table.
To be continued.
Yes, okay, sorry, hadn't done that before. Okay, can I have a motion, please, for items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3? And these are acknowledging contracts approved by Dr. Ackerman per board policy 6085.
I move 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
I second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do, I do have a question, is this agreement with the vocabulary.com, is that something new? Or did we have this before?
Adam, do you want to answer that? Vocabulary.com, won your site license.
So vocabulary.com has a free option that you can get, like, limited access to it, and we haven't had a subscription, it's a new subscription. The nice thing, I'm not a big fan of vocabulary programs that sit separate from, like, some embedded text that the students are doing, the research on vocabulary acquisition is that that's not the best way to learn vocabulary. The nice thing about vocabulary.com is that teachers can use it with texts that the students are reading, and it'll extract vocabulary right from the texts and kind of give guided vocabulary practice around embedded, you know, words that are, that are found in the textbook. So, we've done quite a bit of searching to find what the best program is, and for the price, we think this is a good, good option for us.
And this is used, because I was trying to look online, you said, I think 600 kids, students are going to be using this, which grades are utilizing this?
This, right now, this subscription is for high school, we're thinking maybe middle school too in the future, but this is for high school students.
Thank you.
We voted already, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, can I have a motion, please, for items 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4? And just, this is acknowledging receipt of the claims auditor report for January 2022, acknowledging receipt of the treasures report for January 2022, acknowledging receipt of the revenue status report for January 2022, and acknowledging receipt of the appropriation status report, also January 2022.
I move.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that brings us to our notice of future meetings. As Dr. Ackerman laid out earlier, our next meeting is Tuesday, March 15, this is a change, it's Tuesday, at 7:30, we'll be here, and then the following meeting is Wednesday, March 23, also at 7:30, also here. It is now 9:20, can I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn at 9:20.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.